Welcome to the May 5th meeting of the Glendale City Council. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
What's next? Flag.
Flag salute by Councilmember Drayman.
Could you all rise, please? Pass your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Today marks a celebration known in Mexican and the Mexican community as Cinco de Mayo, or simply May the 5th. It is a celebration of a defeat of French occupying forces by the Mexican army during the early independence of the Mexican nation. The battle was small, but the victory was great because it gave the Mexican nation the confidence that it could determine its own future and destiny. Today, we join our city's many residents and stakeholders of Mexican descent who celebrate this day and others who have adopted this cultural celebration as their own as well. We pray that they celebrate safely. We pray in respect to all the resilience of the Mexican people and use today as an opportunity to give thanks for their many cultural contributions. We pray for those in Mexico and here who are affected by the outbreak of the swine flu and pray for their health and recovery. Amen.
Mr. Kusak, may we have your report?
The agenda for the May 5th, 2009 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 30, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next is presentation and appointments. At 3:00 is agenda preview for the meetings of May 12, 2009.
Mr. Starburn.
Roll call. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, on May 12, we'll be starting in the morning at 9:30 with a special meeting. This is, in essence, the beginning of the series of the citywide budget presentation discussions. Next, on the redevelopment agency, there will be a single item. The Director of Development Services will be providing a report on the reimbursement resolution for the Glendale redevelopment agency issue of tax-exempt bonds. There also will be a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Housing Authority with one item. That'd be from the Director of Community Development and Housing regarding economic stimulus funding under the Federal American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. The city council agenda that evening, there's a number of action items. The first will be the City Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Report. Next, the Director of Parks and Recreation will be bringing bidding results for the seismic upgrade to the Barnet Wilderness Park, in this instance, with a motion to reject all the bids. Next, the Director of Parks and Recreation will be providing a report on Glendale's entry into 2010 Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade. Next, again, the Director of Parks and Recreation will have a report on the transferring of capital improvement funds for the Stingle Field renovation project. The General Manager of Glendale Water and Power will be bringing in a resolution regarding a sales agreement for the Titan project. It's a power project. And then, lastly, the city attorney will have a report on the discussion of possible amendments and additions to the ethics ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. And next is...
What's next?
Next is city councilor staff comments.
Any staff comments? Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, people have read the presently nice, satirical play was put on by Luna Playhouse about my traveling around the world with Mr. Yusefian. Little different act. This week, I will be performing myself. This will be the third year that there should be a flyer going up, promoting Father's Follies. Verdugo Woodlands is for the PTA. This will be my third time they've cornered me into performing. Thank goodness, I have not had to dress up as a woman yet. It's all the Fathers of the PTA that do this. It's quite hilarious. My role's a cameo role. It's very short and sweet. I just didn't want to get too embarrassed on it, so you'll have to come see me. It's a takeoff on Pirates of the Caribbean, and I'll be on the island Tartuga. Tartuga. Is that how you say it? I got the script, and I don't even know how to pronounce the island. Tartuga.
Dave, the script says, "Dave appears in tights."
No, it does not. I got my costume, and for the life of me, I cannot understand how people in those days got dressed in everything they had to put on. Stockings, the vest, the... I mean, it must've taken those people 15, 20 minutes to get dressed, and they had to go out in the heat of the Caribbean. I just... I wonder how they did it. Anyhow, it's gonna be on Friday at 7:30 and Saturday the night at Glendale High School. It's only $7 pre-sale and $8 at the door. It is hilarious. Not counting me, but if you want to see me for a change, come down. It's great for the PTA. This is their 62nd year. This is not a first or second time they've done this. Many civic leaders over the years have performed one way or another in here, and this is my third time getting hooked, and hopefully my last. So, come on down to Glendale High on Friday or Saturday. 7:30 on Friday and 6:00 PM on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman.
I have a few items, Mr. Mayor. The first is, I'd like to thank the public for coming out to attend the eighth annual Kids and Critters event in the Montrose Shopping Park, which also included the Taste of Montrose event, as well as the... which is put on by... or sponsored by Prom Plus at Crescent Valley High, as well as the Glendale Humane Society's Wags and Whiskers Walk. All events were a success. There were somewhere between 15,000 and 16,000 people, as the last estimates came trickling in. That is a nice-size event. We appreciate you all coming. It was a lot of fun. The weather was beautiful, and lots of kids, lots of pets. It was terrific. And, okay. The other item, or another item, Mr. Mayor, is the... I wanted to ask... I thought I... Mr. Steiger is here, from Glendale Water and Power. Mr. Steiger, it was... Did I hear correctly that the outreach meetings for the issue of the mandatory water conservation issue, that there are three scheduled, two here at the city and one at the police community room?
There are five outreach meetings scheduled, three community meetings, as you have...
I meant the community meeting specifically.
Yes, there are three, as you've described. That's correct.
Okay. I would like to suggest that we make sure we hold a community outreach meeting instead of all here at City Hall or on the City Hall campus, including the police community room, that we try to schedule something north of the college and something in South Glendale as well.
We can do that.
Pacific Edison is always a... The room down at Pacific Edison is always a good place in South Glendale, and perhaps the congregational church in the Woodlands or Dunsmore Park, or something, so that geographically people don't have to file to City Hall from all points, north, south, east, and west.
We will absolutely make every attempt to do that.
That would be...
The problem we were having was there... This time of year, it seems to be a significant number of meetings scheduled throughout the city. It was really difficult to find venues for it, but we'll do that. We'll find a place.
Well, I understand Margaret Hammond lives in South Glendale, so she could... You could have it in her living room, I'm sure.
No problem.
Oh, my God.
Okay. All right, so we have one scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Steiger. Also, I would like to ask, Mr. Mayor, if we could adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of architect Jack Simison. And that's a name that is not necessarily familiar to everyone, but I'd like to read you a little bit about him. Mr. Simison passed away on April 8. His full name was Jack Harners Simison, who was a longtime resident and prominent architect who passed away at the age of 86. Jack and his wife moved to La Cañada in 1948, bought a lot on Taca Loma Lane, and proceeded to build their home, and it was there 61 years later that he passed away peacefully. Many buildings and homes bear his distinctive and distinguished creative mark. He designed and built the La Cañada Country Club, the La Cañada Pet Clinic, the La Cañada Medical Center, Crescent Valley Water Company Building, Armstrong Nursery, Hill Street Cafe, and several communications buildings on Mount Wilson. He built the building that houses the Crescent Valley Sun, St. George's Preschool, Journeys and Realty, and the original Dorsey's Building, as well as other businesses in Montrose, Flintridge, and Glendale, as well as the Flintridge Tennis Club, and his own building that is now occupied by Flintridge Family Chiropractic and Dr. Ken Tanaka. He also designed and built additions to the Avalon Hospital in Catalina, as well as commercial buildings and residential projects on the island, among many others, and he designed and built many beautiful homes over Southern California. Just a little bit about him, you'll be interested to know, Mr. Weaver, that he was an engineer also. He graduated with a degree in aeronautical engineering and went to work at the new and upcoming... At that time, New and Upcoming Northrup Engineering Company, worked on the Flying Wing, which was the very early precursor to the B-17 stealth bomber. And then, in 1942, he volunteered for the Army Air Corps and was sent to flight training. As the war escalated, he was then sent to Ohio State for training, further training in specialized training corps, and he briefly volunteered for the paratroopers. And while in Ohio, he met his future wife, Sylvia, and once again, the Army desperately needed men, and they needed well-educated men to bolster averages in the troops that were not eligible to be shipped overseas, and he became a tank gunner. And he was assigned to the 13th Armored Division and landed in Marseille, traveling north to Alsace, where he was wounded and suffered a severe concussion that deafened him and injured his eyes as well, but undaunted after his rehabilitation at Hoff General Hospital in Santa Barbara. In 1945, he returned to finish his degree at the University of Cincinnati, and then later, he entered the College of Arts and Sciences in Architecture, and later, at the University of Southern California, he received his California Architectural License. He won numerous awards and designs in Los Angeles County, and including one of his beautiful homes on Domel Drive, which was featured in the showcase of homes recently, their home tour. I am proud to have met Mr. Simison, and many of those who live in the north part of the city probably don't know that he designed and oversaw the construction for the city of Glendale, the Montrose Shopping Park, in 1967, and he also designed the Montrose Vietnam War Memorial, which is the first Vietnam War memorial in the nation. He received their Founder's Award up there a few years ago, and his family wanted to say that they rejoice even in their sadness, because now they know that Jack can see and hear at last, and he is with God, and he will be terribly missed. And because of his contributions to the Glendale area that are lasting, sense of buildings and monuments, I wanted to raise the issue, make a note of his passing, and ask that we adjourn tonight's meeting in his memory.
I'm going to also have someone. Ms. Friedman.
Thank you. This past Sunday was the second annual Glendale Garden Tour, and it was a huge success. We don't have the number yet of the amount of money that was raised, but all of the money from this event goes to Glendale Aventis Cancer Center, and I want to thank the public, first, for coming out and making this such a big success, and, secondly, to thank all of the business owners who donated raffle items and who sponsored the tour, and, most importantly, to thank Glendale Aventis, to thank Melina Thorp and Mary Abrams and Carrie Nelson and Maury Dean and the rest of the group there. They could be like most hospitals and just treat sick people, but Glendale Aventis really goes out of their way to offer community-based programs that are free to people in the community to keep them well, and I really appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to next year's garden tour. We'll move it. This year was in Verdugo Woodlands, last year was in Cumberland Heights, and next year, we'll find another location. So, if some homeowners association or neighborhood wants to host the garden tour, let me know. We're always looking for good gardens.
Najarian.
I have no comments this evening at this time.
Mr. Drayman.
Sorry, I had two more, Mr. Mayor. One is, I'd like to ask Mr. Hagani if he would please bring back to this council, I would like to agendize a further discussion of the, how do I say it, enhanced zoning or the change of zoning discussion from earlier with regard to the exchange. And I know there's also some interest in maybe talking about a piece of Brand Boulevard at the same time, to include use for not only gallery space and exhibit space, but also for nighttime use for jazz clubs and late-night use as well. So, I'd like to know if we could... If there's someone else in the council who would also like to join me and ask that that be placed on the agenda today.
Mr. Tagawa.
Sure.
I will take "sure" as a...
Says yes, and so am I.
All right. Good. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Tom Lorenz to please come forward, Sergeant Lorenz from the Glendale Police Department, to introduce to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the rest of the council and staff and the public, a special guest that we have here tonight.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, city council members and city staff. I was asked to bring a couple officers here originally in regards to an incident that occurred last Friday, when a unfortunate situation occurred, when someone's wheelchair ramp, aluminum wheelchair ramp, was stolen from their home in broad daylight in the middle of the day. That wheelchair ramp was made out of aluminum, and I've seen a lot of crimes in my 25 years here in the city of Glendale, especially with the economy, when we start talking about the theft of copper from construction sites, catalytic converters underneath the vehicles, the brass caps offer fire hydrants, but it kind of hit a new low when someone took an aluminum wheelchair ramp from Nareen Bagdassarian's home. They wanted to... Rather than have the officers here, who actually were committed to something else, I told Mr. Drayman that, why not bring the family here, who wanted to thank the city, because it wasn't only the police department, specifically Officer Steve Eggit and Sergeant Danny Carver, that started this mission to solve the problem. I ended up calling several people in the city. I talked to people in code enforcement, I talked to people in building planning. I wanted to make sure if a ramp was gonna get donated, it met code. I didn't want to have any problems there. But we were successful, and TMP Services out of Colton, which is a professional ramp service, does it for high schools, hospitals, and they are the nation's largest. They actually also provide ramps for veterans returning from war. They were kind enough to donate a ramp, and I think it's more appropriate that the family who wants to do this... They called me today and said they would like to come to council tonight and thank the city of Glendale for helping them out. So, I'd like to introduce Nareen Bagdassarian. Do you have a microphone?
I do.
And her mother.
I would just like to thank everybody and for all the great work that everybody did towards me, because I really felt like I couldn't go outside going and out of my house. I'm just very thankful.
Thank you.
Just want to add a few words, that, you know, it's very frustrated when she came from the therapy home and she wasn't able to step into the house. I'm sorry. And I was shocked. I said, "What we can do?" And there is no man around to help her in, and it was windy, and we called the cops, the safest place in the world. We called the cops, and they helped us out, and thank you very much for everything. God bless each of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Sergeant, we want to thank you, the police department, and also the company that... Did you say they actually donated?
Yes, it's TMP Services out of Colton, and I want to also say that we received numerous other calls from contractors here, local in the city, a lumber company in the La Cañada area. Several people wanted to come out and help. We decided to let them make the decision on who they got to help them out, and actually, it was an ADA-compliant company that provided the best of the best. It's a ramp about $1,700, and we made sure the company secured it, so this time, the aluminum wouldn't take a... disappear.
I'll make sure they get a commendation. Give me the address and so forth.
Yes.
Mr. Drayman.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to wrap up by saying with regard to this, that the mark of a great city, and Glendale is one, is its capacity to reach out to our neighbors who are in trouble and make their problems ours, and this is a perfect example of that. And it makes me very proud to be a resident of this city and to serve as an elected official here. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to adjourn the meeting tonight in memory of Jim Delzell. He was a coach and teacher at Hoover High for many years, very well-known, longtime member of the community, and his funeral services are tentatively scheduled for Saturday, May 9, at Forest Lawn Glendale. I'm sure there are a lot of former students at Hoover that would want to attend. Okay, what's next?
Next is consent items. Following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, a member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
I would like to pull item 5I.
Okay. And Mr. Starburn.
Yes, we would like to take off calendar item 5K, please. We'll bring it back at a later time.
And Mr. Mayor, 5H, please.
Mayor, I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar. Five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Would you read 5H?
5H is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding contract amendment to conduct an engineering and economic evaluation of nitrate treatment technology for the Glorieta Wells. At H1 is motion authorizing city manager to amend existing contract number C104417 with Water Quality and Treatment Solutions, Inc., extending the contract through December 2009 and increasing the amount by an additional $37,135.
Mr. Najarian. Thank you, Mr. Steiger. I do support this item fully. I think we need to maintain the potability of our wells as much as we can, but here's my question. Are these nitrates coming from La Cañada, Flintridge?
I'm gonna defer to Dan Askenyser, who is our expert in this area.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name's Dan Askenyser, manager of the Water Quality Group for Glendale Water. It's likely historical use of fertilizers in the Verdugo Basin, where these wells are located, or septic systems are the most likely source of the nitrates in the groundwater. So, this is a historical issue from decades gone past.
It'll be several years for those to leach into the groundwater.
Sure. It happened over a long period of time, and the concentrations are in the groundwater right now. We're seeing the concentrations in our wells, so...
Okay. And we're gonna treat it with chlorine initially, but then we've got these three processes that we hope to, either biologically, ionization, osmosis, right?
Membranes. Right. We want to take a look, a good look, at the engineering issues, cost issues, site issues for these three technologies and see how they pencil out for the wells.
Do you foresee a plume of nitrates that are gonna be entering our groundwater?
Well, this is, again, this is a historical issue, and this is not something... We don't see it increasing dramatically. The levels are fairly stable. We're looking to produce more groundwater in different areas of Verdugo Basin. We're seeing similar levels, so it's not something I anticipate that it'll get worse over time. In decades, with groundwater recharge from rainfall and everything, it might, in fact, improve, but that might take decades to happen, so...
Okay. Thank you. Need a motion?
I'll move 5H.
5H1, I'll second it.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
5K, please.
5I. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding proposals received for GWP's lab office HVAC renovation design build at the Grayson Power Plant. At I1 is motion awarding a contract to Allison Mechanical, Inc. in total amount of $128,747 plus contingency and rejecting the proposal from Johnson Controls, Inc.
Mr. Drayman.
Yes, I've asked to pull this item because I received a contact from a Glendale resident, a constituent, David Devens, who is connected to Johnson Controls and had a question about the process, about the apparent awarding of the bid to the higher bidder rather than the lower bidder, and so I raised the issue to find out if that is so and what that is. I see Mr. Devens is in the audience. I don't know if he submitted a speaker card.
The answer is that they were not... The award went to the low bid.
Right. I pulled the item so that the speaker could speak. I think he is not speaking, so I thank you for the answer to your question.
I have a motion.
I'll move 5I1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. What's next, please?
Next on the agenda as listed is oral communications.
Okay, I will take two speakers who have announcements for three minutes, and the rest of the oral communication speakers will move to the end of the agenda. I'll start with Leon Mayer, followed by Jim Cusman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of Glendale Public Library, as well as the Friends of Glendale Public Library. And at the outset, you were talking about a person who was memorialized here tonight, all the volunteer activities he did, and I had the honor of going to the YWCA Legacy Luncheon today, and you could not leave the contributions that so many ladies have made to so many organizations in our city. It's just unbelievable when you sit there and listen to speaker after speaker, person after person, lady after lady, all they've done for our community, so I want to add to the Legacy Luncheon my thank you. Now, as far as the Friends of the Library is concerned, I always have with me, whether my pocket or my car or whatever, I have the means of every citizen supporting the Friends of the Library. It takes you $10 or $20 or $40 to join and support the Friends of Glendale Library, so when I leave tonight, if you want one of these, I have plenty. I'm here to announce our next two events. First event is May 21st. It will be Robert Shear, a famous journalist... Are we gonna... Yeah, here we are. A famous journalist will talk about his book and other related matters, The Pornography of Power. Now, Robert Shear is presently a professor of communications at the Annenberg School of Communications at USC. He has been a journalist for over 40 years. He started out as a Vietnam War correspondent, and he's been busy ever since that time, searching and looking behind all the important issues facing our country and our community and the world. He became a correspondent, and thereafter, he got... Became associated with the Los Angeles Times as a reporter, correspondent, and then he had a national syndicated column. So, Robert Shear will be here on May 21st. Please attend. June 1st, we're having a very interesting duo, two cousins, Eris Genigian and Mark Erax. We've heard about Mark Erax. He's written a nonfiction story dating back over 100 years when his family came to Fresno. He's a cousin of the Eris Genigian, who's also written a book. Mark Erax's book is called The West of the West. It's a book... It's a book with the subtitle of Dreamers, Believers, Builders, and Killers, in which he traces historically his family and the history of California. He's a famous California historian, and I urge you to attend both these events, one on June 1st and the other one on May 21st. And if anybody has any questions, please ask them now. Otherwise, I'll quietly go down the aisle and give out my flyers.
All right, thank you very much, Jim Cusman.
My name is Jim Cusman, and I'm a resident of Glendale. I've come this evening on behalf of the Stepping Stone Players. They're Glendale's only resident community theater company, and they're now celebrating their 10th anniversary of producing quality musical theater that both entertains and involves artists from all levels, professionals and amateurs, and all those in between. The Stepping Stone Players recently received an award, a diamond award, presented by the City of Glendale's Arts and Cultural Commission and Cultural Affairs Division of Parks and Recreation and Community Service. This award is given to organizations that enrich the human experience, reinforce Glendale's identity and civic pride through the arts and culture, and recognize the importance of arts to our quality of life. This year, we are expanding our program with the production of Cheaper by the Dozen, which opened last weekend and has two more weekends to go. It's a wonderful, funny show, appropriate for the whole family, professionally directed and filled with laughs. Starting this Friday, May 8th, it plays two more weekends, Fridays and Saturdays at 7:00 PM and Sundays at 2:00 PM at the Hoover High School Little Theater, 651 Glenwood Road in Glendale. This coming Sunday is a special Mother's Day performance with a special gift for all mothers in attendance, and the show closes after the matinee on Sunday, May 17th. Tickets are $12 with group rates for 12 or more. And for more details, please check our website at www-steppingstoneplayers.com. And for reservations, please call 818-548-3180. I have a few complimentary tickets that I'll leave with the clerk. We'd love for you to come. We really would appreciate you coming to see the kind of work we do. It's truly extraordinary what goes on in with this group. And if there's more tickets needed, please call the number on the ticket, and we'll get some more. And I'll leave some postcards on the table at the rear. We'd truly love to see any and all of you. Thank you for your time.
Can you give us the phone number again, Mr. Cusman?
The phone number is 818-548-3180. Cheaper by the dozen.
What's next, Mr.?
On the action item portion of the agenda, at 8A is City Attorney regarding discussion of appointing members of the City of Glendale on the Burbank-Glendale-Pacidian Airport Authority. At 8A1 is motion appointing elected officials, non-elected individuals to serve a four-year term on the airport authority. At 8A2 is a motion directing staff.
Mr. Weaver.
Since I wish to be considered for appointment to the Airport Commission in accordance with their Political Practice Commission rules, since it is a salary position, I am prohibited from engaging in any way in the selection process, whether voicing my opinion or my position or my qualifications or any other way. So I will leave the council chambers and see you all later.
Okay, since I currently serve and am also interested, I will also recuse myself. I think calling in a salary position is a little bit, not quite, but there is a financial remuneration, so I will also recuse myself and turn the meeting over to.
Mayor Protem is Laura Friedman.
Are these the cards?
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you.
Can we have a report?
Absolutely, Mayor Protem Friedman. Item before you tonight is the appointment or reappointment of commissioners to the Burbank-Glendale-Pacidian Airport Authority. That airport authority is governed by a joint powers agreement which establishes terms for the commissioners of each of the city representatives. Each city has three representatives to the commission. The current terms expire on May 31st of this year, but the current appointees will serve until their appointments are appointed and qualified. So in the event that no decision is made, before May 31st, the current commissioners would continue to serve until their replacements are selected. Before I get into the substantive report, I do want to just reiterate the point with both Mayor Quintero and council members Weaver. The reason that they did recuse themselves is because they have indicated an interest in the position, and the FPPC regulations do provide that because that position does receive a stipend, a monthly stipend, that that's a position that as an appointment, they are not permitted to attempt to participate in or to attempt to influence. The item before you tonight is, there's two options for you, essentially two options. One is whether the council wants to select a process to recruit, nominate, and select appointees. The second option is that the council can nominate and appointees to the commission tonight. With respect to the nomination and election of commissioners to the airport authority, there's essentially two primary methods to nominate and appoint the commissioners. First is that the council can take nominations and then vote on those nominees on an up-and-down vote, so their names can be called, and then the council can say yes or no to those particular nominees. Or the council can take the method of more of a cumulative voting or slate voting, where after the nominations are closed during the roll call vote, each council member's name will be called, each of the participating council members' names will be called, and they can select the three candidates that they wish to be on the airport authority. Obviously, the nomination and the appointment process should take place after the council has had the opportunity to hear from members of the public who wish to speak on the matter. Next, with respect, there has been some inquiries regarding whether there is a policy or ordinance governing the selection and appointment of commissioners, specifically whether there's any rules governing the composition of the city's representatives, whether they have to be council members or non-council members. We just lost quorum. Actually.
No, we didn't.
Well, no, we didn't, because we have two.
Thanks for the report.
Right, right. Two act, yeah, we did lose quorum, actually. Yeah, so we do need to wait.
Should we take a timeout?
Apologize.
Given for the report.
Yeah.
Okay. We are temporarily in recess. We're no longer in recess.
I do apologize, Mayor Protem, that's why I had my hand up. I knew I was going to sneeze, and I just needed a Kleenex, and I apologize. I knew we were going to lose the quorum for a moment, but I thought it would be better for me to sneeze back there and have a Kleenex rather than up here without one. So with that lengthy explanation.
Okay, would you please continue?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So the issue is whether there's any policy or ordinance restricting who the council may appoint. I would point out that prior to 2005, the council had an ordinance on the books that prohibited council members, sitting council members, from serving on the airport authority. That ordinance was amended to allow sitting city council members to serve on the commission. At the time that then-council member, Yusefian, resigned from the airport authority in 2007, the council, by a 3 to 2 vote, adopted a motion limiting his replacement to then-sitting council members. That motion was carried 3 to 2 with the council members Najarian and Draymond dissenting. So just, again, to clarify, the council can select sitting council members or non-council members to serve on the airport authority, as long as they are electors of the City of Glendale, residents of the City of Glendale, they can serve on the airport authority. With respect to the potential, the vote issues, because there are three of you participating, it only takes a majority of the quorum to appoint commissioners to the airport authority. So two of you can, voting together, can appoint a commissioner. Because of the fact that there's only three of you, and there are at least, from where we sit, more than three interested candidates for the commission seats, there is a distinct possibility that because, if the council chooses to use cumulative or slate voting, that you could, the situation could arise where there are tie votes. You could, for example, have four candidates each receiving two votes. In that case, two things would need to happen if you want to change that result. One is that the council would need to move to reconsider that vote, and then, after adopting that motion, could then, again, reconsider its vote, attempt to maybe persuade others to vote differently or change your votes. And again, it's also possible that if a particular candidate receives the three votes of all three councils, then they would be seated in that case. So those are the issues related to the appointment of the three commissioners. And again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask. I know there may be some procedural steps as we go through that we'll have to work through, depending on how the votes come out, if that's, if it's your decision tonight to go forward with voting.
Mr. Draymond.
My question is whether or not both council member Weaver and Mayor Quintero's statement that they wish to serve suffices for a nomination.
It does not.
It does not.
Because, yeah, they'd be.
Okay.
They'd want to be nominated.
Thank you. That was my question.
Any other questions?
I do have a question. Must the, there are three vacant seats. Must the commission be filled as a whole, or may one commissioner with the highest number of votes be seated, and then the remaining unfilled seats be considered a tie and dealt with in that manner? Or is the panel of the commission taken as a whole?
Each seat stands on its own, so if one candidate receives the requisite number of votes, he or she can be seated, with the remaining positions staying open, and then the current commissioners that are serving in those seats would continue to serve until they're replaced. Does that answer your question?
It does. I mean, it leaves, it's a very unusual situation here. And I, I mean, were we to foresee a situation where there would be a tie and it would be continued week to week? Would that preclude any one of us from saying, you know, being there to support, I will be happy to throw my hat in the ring and be a potential candidate which would, which would receive the proper number of votes?
Would it preclude any of you from?
Right.
No, but then from that point on, when any of you expressed an interest, then you would have to recuse yourself as well. And in which case, you'd have three council members have a conflict, and you would have to then essentially draw straws to decide who comes back to participate in that decision.
In order to have quorum.
Yeah, to have quorum and to take a vote.
And maybe back to Mr. Najarian's first question, which was if, if there are an adequate
number of votes to seat one individual, but say a tie on the balance, can the one individual be seated? The answer was they can, but that'll throw in a complexity of if that one person is not an already seated commissioner.
Right.
You'll have to decide which seat is taken.
Right.
Or you could, in that case, make the seating effective at the point that you've made all of your appointments to the commission. So that's another little complexity thrown in, depending on how the vote might possibly come out.
Any other questions? In that case, I would like to take the public's concerns before we begin to deliberate. Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Protem.
Or Lila Ramirez, whichever of you wants to speak first.
Mayor Protem. How many minutes?
Three minutes. Is that not enough time? There's only two of you, so I'll give you more time if you want.
Probably plenty of time since, good evening, Mayor Protem and council members, staff. How nice to see you up there. I had sent in a request to councilman, well, to Mayor Quintero to put on the, before they left, to discuss the process that City Attorney just explained. And I think that without them, the discussion that you're carrying on and the policy that you're about to venture into is questionable. We had raised the concern about the appointment last time because it was a public appointment, and under the rules, policies, and procedures of the council, the public appointments had to be opened up to the public. This did not happen. So we were concerned that, in fact, there was a violation of the adopted policy. We had asked that possibly you revisit that, and we pointed out where we thought the errors and omissions were, and that you would possibly reconsider, rescind the appointment and open it up to the public and then bring it back. And if you wanted to do the same appointment all over again, that was fitting and proper. But that was not your choice. We also informed you that we were concerned and that we, it was expressed that no one, no one said anything. It was just three of us, or four, or five. So we did attempt and did circulate in a very short time some petitions, which we were going to submit to you when this new vote came up. I have the petitions. It's about 80 signatures. And of course, the vote never did come up. It was indicated that if there was anything that was contrary to the law or violated a code of ethics, that it would be most definitely revisited, as you expect that it would. It was not, however. And so we're back at the same place. And now, though, it's really convoluted. Three appointments. Three appointments, and two members get to make them. There's just something, just undemocratic about it. The way that the policy is written, or what I see in the agenda, it's pretty much already indicated that what you're going to do is reappoint who's already there.
I'm going to give you another minute.
Okay. And that, with that said, that skews this process against the appointment of a council member. And I think that's incorrect. Also, I want to say, and should point this out, because this is something that's very important to me, that was important to us, and was something that, from the FPPC opinion, that we thought would violated the process last year and went nowhere. But can I read to you? I don't think it'll take longer than a minute. Assuming that a decision can be logically segregated from another related decision, the public body must then procedurally segregate the decision prior to allowing the public official with a related conflict to participate in the decision-making. The decision from which the public official is disqualified should be considered first. This was not done last year. Those two qualified members were not considered at all. And very likely, the potential is that they would not be considered at all this time, and that they would be denied, once they are not even nominated, that they cannot even vote, and the appointment would be made by two council members, lies in the face of all that is fair and equitable. Do you want the 80 signatures? Not that they matter now, do they?
It's up to you if you want to put it into the record. That's your choice.
Maybe we'll hang on to them. They're valuable.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, can you respond and let us know if there's been anything that's any procedural error or irregularity in this process?
Certainly, Mayor Protem Friedman. First, with respect to the point that the positions were not subject to the normal noticing and advertising that is in our rules regarding commission positions and boards and commissions. The airport authority appointments are subject to that policy, and so the council does have the authority to do that process. However, that resolution that the council adopted governing that process is very clear that not complying with that process does not in any way, doesn't in any way affect the validity of an appointment. So if we don't, if the council chooses not to follow the particular policy regarding the notice and advertising for open. the notice and advertising for open vacant positions, the appointment will not be affected legally. So, it's very clear in the policy that there's no procedural defect with the council choosing to make nominations and appointments tonight. Second point that was made with respect to there only being, the possibility that only two members of the council can essentially appoint members to the airport authority, I would just point out that because, again, because Ms. Mayor Quintero and Councilmember Weaver are conflicted out, they can't participate, they're, they cannot be segmented out of the decision unless the council were to choose to appoint one of them, or both of them, to the airport authority, at which point they could come back and participate. So, that's the reason it's, it's not, there's no procedural irregularity, because our code is very clear that we follow Roberts' Rules of Order. Roberts' Rules of Order do permit actions to be taken by a majority of the quorum. There's very limited circumstances where our code specifically requires three affirmative votes of the council, and this is not one of them. So, those, and the third issue was that the process is somehow skewed against the appointment of a sitting council member, and I just fail to see how a process that's open to both sitting city council members and non-city council members is somehow skewed against sitting city council members. So, those are the, I think I got all the points there.
Any questions from council? You can hold them and ask them later, if you want.
Well, as, as long as I don't hold them till after we vote, that's... Oh, I'll ask the question. It's more of a philosophical question, I guess. I understand that, based on the answer from the City Attorney, I understand that we, that that kind of notice is not necessarily required in this case. But knowing that it isn't a requirement that an authority member be a council member, why wouldn't we open it up to the public with notice? That's my question. And that was one of my questions last time, when I voted against making that appointment simply a council member. It just, I'm not trying to second-guess the intentions of those that were candidates at that time, but it sure left the perception, I think, in some people's minds that it was simply being done to craft the slate, so as not to include any competition. And, and so, that it's, I don't know that there is an answer, but I mean, why would we not want to open it up to the public, is my only question. I mean, I'm prepared to vote tonight, but I just, I guess it's not such a comforting thing to sit here and hear is an answer that, that it is not required to give notice to the public, that it's okay. I understand that. Well, I'm glad to know we're not violating a policy, but on the other hand, why wouldn't we? And so, maybe, respective of how this comes out this evening, it seems like we come back to this sticking point when the terms are up, or someone resigns, or retires from the airport authority. It would seem that maybe we might look at this somehow and find a better way, or a better process, or create a process so that we don't keep stumbling over our shoelaces at this point, every single time. Those are my only comments. Protem Friedman.
Mr. Drayman.
Mr. Drayman, you and I were of like minds last time, when we argued that it should be opened up to the public as a whole. And it is, it is difficult to distinguish the situation, two years, I believe it was two years ago, than what we have today. The only, the only difference perhaps is that there are, apparently, there will be two non-council candidates for three seats, in addition to two council candidates who are interested. Last time, it was a little bit, I think it was a little more narrow, one seat with two councilmen interested. I think the point back then was it was clear that someone from the council was going to be the appointee. And in this situation, there's clearly the possibility that one or two of the non-council people could obtain the seat. I'm not sure that there's a huge distinction, but I see a slight distinction, which would, which begs the question, do we want to open it up to the public in general? There may be some brilliant airport commissioner out there, waiting to be discovered, and...
I'm just going to stop you, because I think we've moved into deliberating, and I want to finish hearing from the public. So, Margaret Hammond.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, and the public. My name is Margaret Hammond. We went through this a couple of years ago, and Ms. Ramirez did refer to the, what we were going to take out to the public, and we did take out to have signed. And you know what? I'm going to read it to you. And here it goes. "In order to protect the integrity of the election process and uphold the people's decision, we, the undersigned, request that the full city council revisit the referenced action for full compliance with fair political practice, law, and the code of ethics and standards of conduct for all elected and appointed officials. We request that the full council review the conflict of interest provisions of the Glendale Municipal Code and the City Charter for total compliance. We request that the full council review for equity and transparency the appointment process used to appoint representatives to the airport authority. The policies and procedures for placing and considering nomination is seriously flawed and inconsistent with generally accepted practice and rules of order. Given the discrepancy in the way the council vote was conducted, and the method by which council members Weaver and Quintero were excluded both from being considered for the appointment, and from deliberation on appointment of Mr. Menuchian, we request that the full council scrutinize the proceedings for due process violations, and take corrective action to render the decision null and void. We request that all rights denied to council members Weaver and Quintero be restored, and that the city council take action to cure the inequities and remedy all violations. We request that the city council adopt an enforceable procedure and corrective action plan to see that this does not happen again." Now, this is our petition. We did meet with then-Mayor Najarian. We discussed our problems and our faults, and that we felt were false of the procedure, and feel that, at that time, we went ahead. But the thing was gone through, and that was it. But the only thing that bothers me is, does it mean that the city doesn't have to follow their own rules? In other words, everybody else has to follow rules, but the city doesn't have to. I don't think that that is a really wonderful way to show the city that, yeah, we have rules, and you have to follow them, but we don't have to. We can do whatever when we want to. And that's my thinking on it. Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question, Ms. Hammond? I have a question for you, if you don't mind. I understand that you feel that there was a something...
At that time, yes.
At that time. I'm wondering, this time, do you, I'm unclear what rules...
Are we, but are we not, are we following the same procedure again? Is this what I can't quite...
That's what I'm wondering. I'm wondering what rule specifically you think is being broken, since we just heard from the City Attorney.
Well, that's right. But then, he did say there were certain variations, shall we say, that could be accepted. I think there should be a member from the public. I know of several people who are involved in, have been involved in their lifetime with airports, and airfields, and companies, that should have a chance at it, too. Why is it being closed off to the public?
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Drayman.
Is it being closed off to the public?
We don't need to close the public. It's not necessarily a public hearing, but unless there's, there's no more cards, something on the night.
Sorry, that's a holdover from my designer view board case.
No problem.
Believe me, that's usually not the problem with the council. Usually, we forget to close the public hearing, so I think that bodes well for the future. So, back to my question, is, has this been closed to the public? My concern is it hasn't been noticed necessarily to the public, but I don't think it is closed to the public. That is not my understanding.
If your question is, can you nominate any residents of the city of Glendale? You can.
It was a rhetorical question. So, I could nominate Margaret Hammond, or Lila Ramirez, if I wanted to, right?
The question I have for, for the rest of the council is, if we make it a policy that with airport commission, we're always going to do the same sort of noticing, public noticing, and request for applications that we do for all of the other boards and commissions, are we then going to open up the MTA, the Water Commission, all of the regional and local boards and decision-making bodies that we have commissioners on? Because I don't know why we would treat this particular board any differently than we treat all of those other boards.
Well, let me, let me make one thing clear. The MTA is a completely different animal, where I'm elected by 12 other cities.
Right.
So, it's not something that came before the council. And I don't know about the MWD, I think, may be more similar to the airport.
But not all of those appointments are. Some have to be council, elected officials, and some do not. I don't know that doing this would cause it, all of, all of the commissions, boards, and appointments to...
I think any of those have to, have to be elected officials.
No. Some of your, pardon me, Madam Mayor, some of your appointments do have to be elected officials. Others, for example, the MTA, you have to nominate a council member, then they have to go through an entirely different process to actually get elected among the corridor cities. I think the airport is probably more like the MWD position, although one is compensated and one is not. But in either case, you could have elected officials, you could have community representatives on either of those boards. And they're much the same roles. One, they're, they're both joint powers, authorities, that are undertaking services on behalf of multiple agencies. So, it is much like MWD.
Let me ask another question to the council. This has been on the agenda now for, for a couple of weeks at least. Has anybody received any applications from the public, or any interest from other people who had a desire to throw their hat into the ring?
Well, I've received a few nibbles from former city council members, and certain individuals who have been, let's say, perennially interested in the position. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, they weren't hugely, hugely interested in being on, just subtle inquiries as to, should there be, you know how it goes. They don't want to, they don't want to be too forceful, but should there be an opening on the airport commission, by golly, I sure wouldn't turn it down if you were to appoint me.
To answer your question, Madam Mayor Protem, I, the only inquiry of me with regard to a nomination, or an individual wanting to be nominated, were from those who are either currently serving on the airport commission, or who are on city council, who are interested in serving. I think those are all the names that you are acquainted with.
So, it seems the first question is whether we want to try to fill these seats tonight, or whether anybody thinks it's a benefit to try to open this up and have more, more applications?
Well, not to be presumptuous, but I think that the current field, if I'm assuming that there are four candidates out there, I think are sufficiently qualified, and it's at a certain level of qualifications. Were there anyone else, I think, anywhere close to that, or possessing the same type of interest that those are current for potential candidates or nominees would have? I would certainly have been aware of it. And I think we all would have been aware of it. Any one of us would have received a serious inquiry by email, or phone call, or in person. And I don't believe that that's out there. Perhaps the quality of the current nominees are perhaps a deterrent to those who would otherwise be interested.
So that I understand, just to be clear. So, the City Charter gives us a few different mechanisms. We can appoint, or we can open it up and take applications, and appoint from amongst those, but we don't have to. So, we're not breaking any rules if we decide to choose three commissioners from the group of four that we have now. I just want to be clear about that. Just because we have choices doesn't mean that we're doing something wrong by selecting one of those choices.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Mr. Drayman, did you have anything to add, or any preference either way?
I appreciate your line of inquiry, Friedman. I, I'm, as I said, I am prepared to vote tonight, and stand by the vote of this council. However, I would again suggest that in the future, or we do this again, we should, I think we should revisit this process as a full council, hear input from the public, and try to craft a policy that we stick to, which would include public noticing. It just, so, but anyway, that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily apply to this evening.
Who put this on the agenda, anyway? At this time? I mean, probably...
Since none of us are raising our hands...
Probably Mr. Howard, just...
Well, no.
Robert?
Let me fess up.
Okay.
With this appointment effective June 1, if you consider the two options of soliciting requests from the outside, as well as the current seated members, then you'd need about that period of time to have a selection made by that first meeting in June. So, our feeling was you needed to consider this early May in order to go through the process, if indeed you were going to solicit names from the outside. And so, that's how the matter got on the agenda. The three seats are up. Appointment should be effective June 1. You've got about three weeks to get through a process, if you were going to solicit names from the outside. In any case, you needed to get started pretty soon.
Okay. Well, it sounds to me like Councilmember Najarian and Councilmember Drayman are satisfied with the process to this point, wanting to move forward to a vote, but to bring back the issue of coming up with a policy, a consistent policy for the airport commission appointments in the future. Okay? Assuming we don't have to vote on that, we can just now move forward into deliberations on...
I guess I hear more than two council members want to bring that back at some point to discuss that. We can do that.
And perhaps, if I may add, I'm not sure if anyone's interested in staggering the terms.
That would require an amendment to the JPA, which...
Oh, that's a JPA?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I do, aside from that, I do see some benefit in that, but let's not go there, then.
Okay. Now, my next question, moving forward for my colleagues, is, would you prefer to discuss the four candidates, or to move right into nominations and vote?
You could, and I would just add, you could also nominate, and then have the discussion of the candidates.
Okay.
That's also an option available to you.
Why don't we start with the nominations, and make sure that...
I think that makes sense also.
All right. Do I have any nominations?
I would be happy to nominate, if I may do a multiple nomination, the nomination of Rafi Menuchian, Frank Quintero, and Carl Pavlovidis.
Do I have a, do I need a second?
You don't need a second for nominations.
Okay. Are there any additional nominations? Yes.
Yes, I'll also nominate Councilmember Weaver.
Okay. Well, would you like to go right into a vote?
Well...
Or would you rather explain your choices, explain your nominations, and then we can take a vote?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I just, I just suggest you close, see if there are any more nominations, and then close nominations.
Are there any more nominations? No. Okay. Then, I'm giving, I will give you two choices. One is to go right, we can, I'll call for a vote, or you can explain your nominations, and maybe try to convince your...
Okay, I will. I'll go first, and I'll try and be kind. I think the role of an airport commissioner, especially on this commission, is very important to the city. You are representing the city alongside the cities of Pasadena and Burbank. It is very important, in my mind, that the, the members of the airport commission maintain an impeccable credibility, and a certain, a certain group of constituents, if you will, in quotation marks, or stakeholders, that, that they... marks, or stakeholders, that they represent and deal with. I don't believe that the technical knowledge of an airport and its workings are the most important factor for a commissioner in this job. There is capable staff, there are sufficient technical resources made available to these commissioners. And I can say that because on some of my other boards and commissions, I'm not an expert in trains, I am not a transportation engineer, but clearly, when it comes time to make those policy decisions, the staff and the CEO do spend the time to discuss it with you. But what is of utmost importance, is when you sit down with those commissioners from those other cities, and you speak your mind, and you talk about the issues affecting Glendale, that they look at you and listen to you with a large amount of credibility. And then no one ever second guesses your motives, no one ever second guesses your background or your abilities. And I think that's important. I think that the three gentlemen that I nominated do meet all those criteria without any hesitation, and I would be very happy to see all three of them returned to the Airport Commission. The fact that they have a certain amount of experience also helps. But as I said, that that in itself is not the determining factor, in my mind. These are gentlemen who are speaking and dealing with populations, if you add us all together, we're probably about half a million or more in our neighboring communities, not to mention the other affected communities. They have to have dignity, respect, and I fully support the three candidates that I nominated.
Thank you. Councilmember Drayman?
Well, I would agree and endorse everything that my colleague, Mr. Najarian, just said. And that is why I also added Councilmember Weaver's name to the list, since he has also served on the Airport Commission in the past, and has not had the opportunity to complete a full term. Mr. Quintero, Mayor Quintero, has not completed a full term. And Councilmember, or former Councilmember, former mayor Rafi Manukian, has not completed a full term. The only person on the Airport Commission at this time that has had the opportunity to complete a full term is Airport Authority Member Povlouitis, who I believe has served since 1999, 10 years. So by the criteria, I guess you'd say, maybe that's too strong or formal a word, by the criteria mentioned by my colleague, I don't think this helps, the decision-making, but I think all are qualified certainly to serve. As a matter of fact, there seem to be Airport Commissioners and former Airport Commissioners all around us, everywhere. They're coming out of the woodworks, my goodness. There's one sitting to your right, Mr. Najarian, City Manager Starbird, also served as an Airport Commissioner, as recently as, I think, six months between Mr. Usafian and Mr. Quintero. Carl Messick served for many, many years, I think decades, actually. Former Councilmember and Mayor Ragio served for many years. In any case, this is, all sort of has the feeling to me, Madam Mayor, of becoming more like an episode of What's My Line?, or I Have A Secret?, in the way this is unfolding, than the appointment of... I have confidence that we will be in fine hands regardless of how this goes. I don't have any trepidation with it, and I think we have four very qualified candidates. The only thing I would add is that there has been much talk about the secret, mysterious, and highly technical Part 161 study. And I would like to air that just a tiny bit. And I'd like to turn to the City Manager, who is the only one on the dais, as his eyes just rolled backwards into his head, and his eyebrows disappeared up behind his hairline, and ask him if he would like to just give us the 4-1-1 on the 161 for a moment, because I believe it is pretty much not in contention anymore as to whether that is going forward, whether it is done. I mean, it is, as I understand it, fairly well on its way. Would you mind filling us in?
It has taken flight, so to speak.
Kind of.
Mayor Protem, Mr. Drayman, when I left the commission, which was back in February or so, January, I was there about five months. The Part 161 had been completed. The debate at that time was the process for filing with the FAA, and whether or not the FAA was going to give the authorities sort of a pre-submital comments on the study. But the study had, in the views of staff and consultants and the commission, met the standards by which studies of that type, and this would have been, I think, the first study, Part 161 to actually be completed in the nation. So as a bit of a test case, and a model for others to follow, you can imagine the amount of scrutiny that it was being given by all interested parties. But at that time, there was justification under the conditions spelled out by the legislation that enacted the Part 161 process, and we were anticipating its submittal to the FAA. But at the time that I was there and then left, I think they had held up submittal in order to allow the FAA to give them some sort of pre-submittal comments on it. I'm frankly not familiar with what happened following that. I believe the study has been submitted, but I would stand corrected, Carl or Mr. Manukian would probably know better than I.
Sitting, are they allowed to participate in the proceedings, by the way?
I would, out of fairness, I would request, his eloquent speech may influence one of us who were not otherwise disposed, which would be unfair to...
No, I agree. I think that we shouldn't, I'd rather not open it up to any of the applicants at this point.
I think the key was, though, for a number of years, it was the development of the Part 161, and whether it was frankly going to be good policy of the commission to actually complete it and submit it. I think during the time that I was on the commission, there was a strong feeling among the commissioners that the Part 161 needed to be committed, to be completed, needed to be submitted. There didn't seem to be any continuing debate about that. And indeed, then finding, I'll call it, a means by which to show that the conditions established by the FAA for a submittal of Part 161 could be met, was kind of the big breakthrough. And again, procedurally, the last discussions I was involved in had to do with the FAA giving sort of precondition comments to it. I believe that occurred, and I believe that Part 61 is in a condition to be submitted, if it hasn't already been submitted.
Madam Mayor Protem, my reason for raising the issue was, or asking for the clarification, is that it happens, in this case, that each of our nominees, at one point or another, has been involved in the process of working on and with this Part 161 study. So I think that the other point I'm trying to get at is that there are other things that the Airport Commissioners and the Airport Commission will be dealing with beyond this. They are building issues, development issues, financial issues. And in fact, the members are, sit on a variety of committees as part of the Airport Commission. So there's been this notion floating out there that the thing that we should be riveted on and focused on is the Part 161. And I know, as one elected official here, I'm looking beyond just that, to also some other broader qualifications that deal with some of the building development and financial issues as well. Thank you.
First, I'll just talk a little bit about the policy. I feel comfortable voting at this point, because it seems to me that the reason that the charter is worded the way that it is about this commission, is to give the council the flexibility of choosing from amongst a group that they feel is qualified, whether it's reappointing, or of whatever applicants that they have, to give them the flexibility of either sticking with, or considering a small group of candidates that they feel are qualified, or opening it up to the larger group in the city. It doesn't seem to compel the council to use one process over another. And I agree that we have four very qualified applicants, or four qualified people who want to be on this commission, who have all sat on it at various times. And it's a very difficult decision, and I was thinking to myself this week, why am I having so much trouble deciding who to vote for in this? And it's actually, it's good news. And the good news is that we do have four people, any of which would do a very good job and have done a good job. So that's the good news for the city, and the reason that I don't feel compelled at this point to open it up to a larger group of people. I just don't think that we're going to have someone walking in who is in any way superior to what we have in front of us. So then I think about the different qualifications, or what each person brings to the table. It seems to me that in general, having elected city council members sitting on these sorts of regional boards is a good thing. It's a good thing for the city, because they convey a certain amount of political cachet at a regional level that I think helps influence policy. They also understand their desires of their constituents, more than people that are sort of not elected representatives. So because of that, I fully support Councilmembers Weaver and Councilmember Quintero, Mayor Quintero, to be on that commission. I think it really, it helps us. Now, Mr. Manukian, I think, has done a very good job on the Airport Commission. He's also, has the experience of being a decision-maker, of building consensus. He has a lot of support in the community, and I take that all very seriously. Mr. Povlouitis, on the other hand, has 10 years of experience on the Airport Commission, is himself a pilot, and brings a different set of, a different perspective than the rest. So I think either one of them are a great choice. But in some ways, I feel that Mr. Manukian brings something that we already have with the other two elected representatives, in terms of having that sort of political understanding, that policymaking understanding. Mr. Povlouitis brings something very different. And for that reason, just because I think he does add something very different to the mix, I'll be giving my support tonight to Mayor Quintero, Councilmember Weaver, and Mr. Povlouitis. So with that, do I, any further discussion?
Well, no, I'll hold discussion. Perhaps there may be another opportunity to speak.
I have nothing further to say, other than to vote.
And with that, can I call for, I think that, let's try doing the sort of, the slate idea, where we each vote for three, and we'll see where we go.
Councilmembers Drayman?
I will cast my votes for Councilmember Weaver, Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Quintero, and Airport Commissioner Rafi Manukian.
Mayor Protem Friedman?
Mayor Quintero, Councilmember Weaver, and Mr. Povlouitis.
And Councilmember Najarian?
I will cast my vote for Mayor Quintero, Rafi Manukian, and Carl Povlouitis.
So who is keeping count?
I was.
Y'all were.
I think everyone at home in here. Mayor Quintero is the only person who received three votes. There is one vote for Councilmember, I'm sorry, two votes for Weaver, and two for Povlouitis, and two for Manukian.
So does this then mean procedurally that Mayor Quintero has that one seat, and we take him out of the mix, and we can have, call for reconsidering the other three?
That's correct. You have to reconsider for the three that are tied. Somebody would have to make a motion to do that. Otherwise, those tie votes would automatically get carried over to the next meeting.
Councilmember Drayman?
Question to the City Attorney. However, there is the possibility that Council, excuse me, I will get this right anytime soon, and I do apologize, that Mayor Quintero might feel that he still needs to recuse himself.
I thought the question was, is the issue of his actual vote, is that done? Yeah, he can participate, but he can choose not to participate in the actual second vote.
Okay, that's a different question. So should we ask him if he'd like, if he would choose to vote? He can still, knowing he can still recuse himself?
Don't we have to, don't we have to have a motion to reconsider the vote to begin with?
That should come first, before you ask Mr. Quintero to come in.
Mr. Starbird?
Should he be here for the vote on reconsideration, or should that be taken up before he's asked if he wants to participate?
At this point, he's been appointed to the commission, so he can participate at this point, or he can wait until after.
Is there a fancy way, or?
No, and I can ask, is he back there?
I believe he's back, Mr. Weaver.
Of course, he can still recuse himself.
He can still recuse himself. Who's behind door number one?
And given that he has to serve with whoever is voted on, it's certainly understandable if he did want to refuse himself.
Mr. Garcia has given me the options, and I think it's in the best interest for me to continue to recuse myself.
Thank you.
At least at this point.
Congratulations.
Okay, then does anybody want to make a motion to reconsider? The other, the remaining two seats?
I'll reconsider the, consideration of the remaining two seats.
And I'll second that.
Hey, can we have, is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I have some discussion. Look, time and time again...
Excuse me, just as a point of, don't we have to vote?
Do you want to, did you want to discuss the motion to reconsider? Did you want to discuss the point?
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Friedman?
Yes.
Let me, I may, let me again urge the selection of Mr. Manukian and Mr. Povlouitis, to the exclusion of Mr. Weaver. I know he's our colleague, I know we have to work with him, but this gentleman is going to be representing the city of Glendale. Time and time again, in our own city, Mr. Weaver has shown contempt for the audience, for the speakers, for us on the dais, and left the chambers in the middle of deliberations, in the middle of closed session, and before oral communications. And I know there's oral communications at the airport. Now, if he sees Barry Allen at the airport, what's he going to do? Get up and run away? Is that what we want our commissioners to do? I don't think it is. We want a commissioner who's going to sit there and listen to everything that has to be said, good or bad. That's our job up here. We've gone through it, you've seen it on design review. And I think that type of behavior deeply disturbs me, and is not responsible conduct, not only for a city councilman, but for someone who's going to be representing the city in front of our neighboring cities of Pasadena and Burbank. And that's just one example of some of the issues with Mr. Weaver. I will just touch on the fact that oftentimes, he comes in and says, my mind is made up, I'm not listening to what anybody says. Other times, he's the opposite. I don't care, whatever you guys want to do. We need better than that on the Airport Commission. We don't need to be, we don't need to have that sort of conduct aired out amongst our neighboring cities. It leaves an impression in the whole region. So I think that Mr. Manukian and Mr. Povlouitis are the ones that need to be elected.
Mr. Drayman?
Well, I see that Mr. Allen is in the audience, so I can, I don't know if he's taking notes about appearing at the oral communications at the Airport Commission, but if he does, I'm sure that they will send you a thank you note, Mr. Najarian. But in any case, well, listen, the Glendale City Council, and the people who have made up this council for 100 and how many years? 103 years, have been an interesting lot. It is no less... It is no less interesting now than it, than it was four years ago, 10 years ago, 50 years ago, or even 100 years ago, I am quite sure. They're made up of a variety of personalities, and a variety of different skill levels when it comes to dealing with the public and with public policy. Mr. Weaver is elected by a constituency, and was reelected as recently as two years ago by that constituency. I understand your comments, Mr. Najarian, but I find them unpersuasive with regard to the Airport Commission. It is perhaps something that you should, or perhaps will, take up with the public at such time as Mr. Weaver runs for reelection, but it seems funny to say, I'll urge my colleagues, it's the same colleagues, the same three of us, to support Airport Authority member Menuchyan and Councilmember Weaver. I believe what Mr. Weaver brings to the table is the background of an engineer, which I know sometimes causes us all to grown up here, because he reminds us so often that he is an engineer. However, he is an engineer. And one of the, one of the aspects that the commissioners will be looking at will be continued development of the airport, and construction, and building at the airport. And even if he drives them a bit crazy on those issues, that's okay with me, because first of all, why shouldn't we share the wealth with the city of Burbank and Pasadena? But also, and to be more serious, he's another set of eyes that cares very deeply about the city of Glendale. The reason I am also still supporting Mr. Menuchyan is because he currently, I believe, holds a, a, a position within the Airport Authority, I think on the board, as secretary, I believe. And he brings a background of finance which is going to be extremely important as we, as the airport continues to grow and expand. And in fact, that is so important, that that is the nature of one of the committees that makes up the Airport Commission. So that's where my two votes go. And it's nothing against Lieutenant Provolitis. This was a very hard decision for me as well. But I also feel that, all other things being equal, Mr. Provolitis has served for 10 years, and I think that there is nothing wrong at this point with making that change, and allowing three members of the Airport Commission, who, or one-time members of the Airport Commission, none of whom have had an opportunity to complete a single term. Mr. Weaver has not had that opportunity, Mr. Quintero has not had that opportunity, and now will, and Mr. Menuchyan has not had that opportunity. Mr. Provolitis has. So that's where I am with it. I'm not sure that either Councilmember Najarian and I persuaded each other, but, but that's my reasoning.
Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Well, it only looks like I'm a tie-breaking vote, because I'm going last, but that's not, that's not really my choice. I still feel the same way. To me, it's, Councilmember Weaver is a colleague, and he's also an elected representative, and I just feel that in general, elected representatives have the priority on these regional boards and commissions, and I believe that they should have that priority. Because I do think that they help the city in terms of bringing a sort of political weight to the deliberations, and since in some ways, even though we're all in the airport together, we also need people who are looking out for the interests of our city. And I think it's easier for an elected representative to make that case on these boards than it is for someone who's appointed. I do agree that Mr. Menuchyan is very qualified, and has done a very good job. I just think that Lieutenant Provolitis brings something a little different to the board than, than Councilmembers Weaver and Mayor Drayman, I'm sorry, Mayor Quintero. So I don't quite know where we can go with this. We seem to be stalemated, and I don't think that a week is going to make a difference. I mean, I would be more inclined to switch my vote to Mr. Menuchyan than to, away from Mr. Weaver. Because to me, that's, that's not, you know, I'm very set on keeping my vote for, for Councilmember Weaver.
Well, if I may.
Please.
I think an appointment of Mr. Weaver to the Airport Commission condones all his behavior, and everything that he has done in the council. I personally feel disrespected when, in the middle of a discussion, he gets up and walks out. I personally feel disrespected when, before we even start a discussion, he says, "My mind is made up, I don't care what any of you say." Now, he might be talking to our constituents when they're discussing an airport issue that's important to the city. "City of Glendale, I don't care what any of you say, my mind is made up." And I think that's terrible. So if you condone the behavior of Mr. Weaver, then I think he deserves a vote. I do not condone that behavior. He's, he's an engineer, I grant that, but I just don't feel that the Airport Commission, on such a high profile, is a place for someone who has such interpersonal and group dynamic skills as Mr. Weaver. And that's all I better say, because I do have to work with him for two more years.
As a point of fact, you don't have to work with him for two more years. But we'd hate to see you go, so, no, I'm just teasing. Look, I came, I came to this council two years ago. When I arrived here, the thing that I noticed quite immediately was that none of my brand-new colleagues were speaking to one another. A lot of issues, a lot of old stuff going on that I wasn't privy to, and it seemed to me that it was time to, to make a statement about some change in how we, we interact. I, I sense a tiny bit of inconsistency in my colleagues' comments, but I'm not, not anxious to pick a fight with my good friend, Mr. Najarian. So I will just leave it at this. There was, how big a can opener I want to bring to this, and how big a can of worms I want to open. There was a time when a vote was held of no confidence for a council member up here. I was entertained by my colleague. And, and that, to me, seemed like the ultimate statement about the inability of a sitting council member to function up here with his colleagues, to represent the public, in terms of behavior and so on. Took a lot to, to get to that point. It wasn't just something that was willy-nilly raised. However, nearly everyone on this council then in turn, shortly thereafter, nominated and voted for that same council member to serve as the Chair of the Housing Authority. That seems like an inconsistency to me. I voted for him as well, just as I am, have nominated and am voting for Mr. Weaver. Anyone who knows me, and knows my political history in this city, knows that Mr. Weaver and I have not had a, exactly a friendly political history going back over the years. However, somehow or other, I have been able, and so has he been able, to craft a working relationship in these council chambers. I'm not saying that I condone the things that you point out about his behavior, Mr. Najarian. I just don't think that they rise to the point of precluding him from serving on a, the Airport Authority. In fact, he has served there before, for a brief time, and I heard nothing of him walking out of oral communications there, storming out of meetings, or abusing the public, or anyone else. So based on that past history, I, I would encourage the support of Mr. Weaver and Mr. Menuchyan, and I would ask my colleague, Councilmember Friedman, what it might take to, what kind of convincing dialogue, or encouragement to, to move a vote one way or the other.
I was just thinking that I think it's time to move on and move along with this. I've made my feelings clear, but I'm willing to take another vote. So with that, may I roll call?
Do we need a motion for?
The nominations are still on the floor.
Yes, so I can read off. If you'd like me to progress with the roll call. Councilmember Drayman?
Yes, I will vote, cast my two votes, for, one for Mr. Weaver, and one for Mr. Menuchyan.
Councilmember Najarian?
I'll vote for Mr. Menuchyan and Mr. Provolitis.
And Mayor Protem Friedman?
In the interest of resolving something that otherwise I think will not be resolved tonight, or next week, or the week after, I will vote for Mr. Weaver and Mr. Menuchyan.
Okay, that leaves one.
Now, my vote, I have.
Settles that.
That settles that. I have three votes for Mr. Menuchyan, and two votes for Mr. Weaver.
And one for Mr.
And one for Mr. Provolitis. So that Mr. Menuchyan and Weaver are appointed to the Airport Authority.
That's right.
And I want to thank Lieutenant Provolitis for his service in these past 10 years.
Absolutely, if I may join you in that.
You.
I had the opportunity to speak to Earl prior to all of this, to hear his input on his nomination, selection, continuation. I think that his service has been more than just admirable. I think it's, has been essential leading, leading us through, helping to lead this, city's interests through this Part 161 study.
Mr. Starber?
This would be effective first meeting in June, June 1, essentially?
That, that's correct.
So is, at this point, are we going to ask for our colleagues to join us again?
Yes, let's ask for our colleagues to join us.
Right, you can also take a recess.
They, back, still back here?
Yeah.
Well, I think. Hey, well, I'll walk out this way, if you'll walk back that way.
What, he's not coming?
Madam, Mayor Protem, are we taking recess?
Yes, five minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Ready? We're back from recess, and the appointees to the Burbank, Pasadena, Glendale Airport Commission have been chosen. I want to thank Mr. Provolitis for the years that he's spent on the commission. He certainly did an excellent job, and perhaps will prepare a, some plaque for Mr. Provolitis. He certainly deserves it. What's next, Mr. Kozakian?
We return to oral communication. Discussion is limited, items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allotted five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, I have a card from Lori Collins.
Evening, gentlemen and madam. My name's Lori Collins. I'm here tonight representing the League of Women Voters of Glendale and Burbank. Last week at council, Mr. Weaver requested that staff draft a report on, and council consider whether it wishes to place on the ballot for the next municipal election, amendments to the city charter to require that the city clerk's position and the city treasurer's position be appointed rather than elected positions. The League believes that full public discussion of this major change in the city's structure is vital, and should the council decide to go forward with the issue, we would like to hold a public forum. Therefore, we're offering to hold a public forum on the question that would provide background information on the duties of the offices of clerk and treasurer, information on the differences between an elected and appointed office, and arguments both for and against the change. If you recall, our league conducted a similar forum on campaign finance last year, prior to council's deliberations on campaign finance reform. We hope the city of Glendale will accept our offer to engage all the citizens of Glendale in this important discussion on the city's future. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other cards for oral communications?
Yes.
Margaret Hammond?
Sorry about that, I thought I turned it in already. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. You know, on the way here, as I say, I listened to a radio station that plays a lot of old, older songs, and one of the ones that was on as I came, was driving here, was Louis Armstrong singing "What a Wonderful World We Live In." And I thought, gee, it's true. The sun was sort of setting, and it is a great place to live, we're very fortunate. We have a lot of things to be grateful for. And, you know, but it takes all of us working together to make it a good place to live, and to ensure our quality of life. And, you know, not just as residents of the city, but as citizens of America. We need to be American, first and foremost, and remember that. That's why this is such a great country, because as long as we remember, and keep on being, proud of being American, it's going to keep us going. And an older lady with a little boy, he pressed the light, the flashes went on, he runs out, and she had to run and grab him. And the one car in the right lane stopped. The one in the left didn't. He went through. And I went like, wow! So I pulled out because I could see another car coming up. I pulled out across to try to make sure, because that woman, I could just see them flying in the air. It's terrible. What -- where are people going that they need to knock down citizens? An old lady and her little grandson. It was frightening. I really, I'm telling you, every time I go somewhere, I get more and more frightened about our crosswalks, the people, the pedestrians. I mean, they're pretty vulnerable. You've got a car that weighs, what, 2,000 pound or 20 -- well, I don't know how much it weighs, against somebody that weighs 150? Wow! I mean, that's no opponent. That's, just forget it. One of the other things that came up a couple weeks ago was about the Glendale Bears and their organization that had lost $32,000 through no fault of theirs, trust in a treasurer. They do need some support. They do need donations. So any of you out there that have some money that you would like to see put into a good cause, and these are, a lot of them are low-income children, and they're from, I think, about five or six to 14. I think Mayor Quintero talked to them, I believe. And I do think it's a worthwhile thing to donate if you have money and you're thinking you want to do something for the youth. And these are very worthy children. I mean, they do car washes, they do all kinds of things, and their parents do, too. So please keep in mind, and the lady's name is Tina Marquez, and it's P.O. And I know they would be grateful for any kind of a donation. I really feel for them because they're a group that has tried over the years to be so independent and self-supporting. I would really encourage you to think about them and the children that will not maybe be able to have a season this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That closes oral communications. Are any city council staff comments? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have some new business. I have --
Actually, there's going to be some comments. Do you have any comments?
I beg your pardon. You're talking about with the --
Oral communications.
Sorry.
Sorry. Any comments? The speaker mentioned the League of Women Voters doing a forum. I think that's a good idea, and maybe they can work with the staff to see how we can go about developing that concept. Any other comments?
I agree.
Friedman?
I agree.
Okay. All right. What's next, Mr. Clark? Is there any new business? Mr. Drayman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two motions that I would like to make now. One is, let's see. I move that the city of Glendale's claim against the city of Los Angeles and Los Angeles Department of Water and Power related to electric transmission rights, Claim Number C-09-4375, is hereby ratified, and the city attorney is hereby authorized to pursue said claim.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next?
I have some new business as well. Mr. Mayor, I move that the claim for damages of Charles Sari for property damage be and hereby is approved for payment in a total sum of $15,882.25. The Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the receipt of a properly executed release.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
What's next?
I have some new business as well. Mr. Mayor, I move that the claim for damages of Charles Sari for property damage be and hereby is approved for payment in a total sum of $15,882.25. The Director of Finance is authorized to issue a warrant in said sum for delivery by the city attorney upon the receipt of a properly executed release.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
More, Mr. Mayor?
I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of William Marty Corina, Esquire, of the Law Offices of Rotan and Tucker, LLP, to provide legal services to the city of Glendale with regard to pending issues involving the telecommunications and cable industry and the bankruptcy of Charter Communications. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for providing the legal services outlined above.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
What's next?
There's no other new business. Is there a motion to adjourn in memories of Jack Simison and Jim Delzo?
No move.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
[Crosstalk]